Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight requesting your wisdom, guidance, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion. May this be your grace as we make decisions that will affect faculty, staff, students, and all stakeholders of LaFouche Parish School District. May we always remember that everything we do in our capacity here tonight, Lord God, is for the greater glory of you and the service of humanity. We ask this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Superintendent, how about the role?
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Patita?
Yes.
Mr. Bootery?
Here.
Dr. Guilla? Ms. Bourgeois? Mr. Rob-- uh, excuse me, Ms. Robichaud?
Here.
Mr. Schwest? Mr. Plazons?
Here.
Mr. Duplantis?
Here.
Mr. LaFont?
Here.
Mr. Archer? Mr. Bernard?
Here.
Mr. Adams?
Here.
Here is the most important point of this meeting tonight, the awards and recognition. Colonel, do you have something to add?
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, as you can see, we have a very, very packed house tonight, and I'm going to be extraordinarily brief as a result. I want to get you out of here. But I don't want to do it without acknowledging what's really the coolest thing that we do all year long is recognize our kids that score perfect scores on the LEAP test and those other accomplishments. Just recently, the state superintendent came to LaFouche Parish and recognized the parish for all of their hard work. But the truth is, I haven't taken a test in many, many years. The hard work and the accolades are absolutely owed to these children who have just done a remarkable job. So congratulations. Let's get started with a round of applause for all the good people. Having said all that, let's begin.
I'll start.
Hudson will begin.
Alrighty, so we're going to recognize our third graders at this time who had a perfect score of an 850 on the LEAP 2025 Spring '22 Administration. So these are our third grade students. William Demades from Bayou Blue in ELA.
When your name is called, squeeze up here wherever you want.
Alright. Isabel Angeron from Bayou Blue. She's coming up with her glitter.
Love it. Congratulations on that. And look, it'll be difficult for everyone to get pictures. He's going to post all of these to both Facebook and our website, so you'll be able to have them.
We have Knight LeBlanc, also from Bayou Blue. Owen Markusen from Bayou Blue, or Markusen. Alrighty, Jackson Kirkle from Bayou Blue.
Jackson, I just met.
From Bayou Bum, Ava Landry. From BCA, we have Georgia Wang. From Acton Elementary, we have Jax Ford. We do have Owen Markusen that should be here from Bayou Blue. From Lockport Upper, we have Beau Savoie. He also scored a perfect score in both ELA and Social Studies. From Lockport Upper, Pierce Verret. From Lockport Upper, Lily Vincent. From Raceland Upper, Maverick Griffin. From St. Charles Elementary, William Danos. Also from St. Charles Elementary, Baron Jones. Those are our third graders. Now we have our fourth grade students who will be recognized with a perfect score of 850. We have from Galliano Elementary School, Kirsten Abear. From North LaRose, we have Parker Abear. From South LaRose, we have Kayden Adams.
Alright, the next group of students are seventh graders who scored a perfect score on the LEAP test. First, we have Elise Bro, of Bayou Community Academy. Elise had a perfect score in English and Science as well. Another BCA student with a perfect score in ELA, Bree Dempster. From Six Ward Middle School with an ELA perfect score, Miley Griffin. From Six Ward Middle School, ELA, Ella Molazon. And from Six Ward Middle School in ELA, Elise Tamplain.
We'd like to recognize Knight LeBlanc from Bayou Blue Elementary School.
Alright, these group of students took the eighth grade test last year. From LaRose Cut Off Middle School in ELA, Ms. Sonia Lee. From Lockport Middle School in ELA, Ally Orsamo. From Six Ward Middle School in ELA, Ella Alamon. From Six Ward Middle School in ELA, Peyton Claymont. From Six Ward Middle School in ELA, Emily Granier. From Six Ward Middle School in ELA, Colin Murillo. From Six Ward Middle School in ELA and Social Studies, Luke Omer. From Bayou Blue Middle School in ELA, Rafe Flegel. From BCA and Social Studies. From BCA and Social Studies, Jayden Wagisback. From East Tibbetto Middle School in Social Studies, Oliver Wiley. From LaRose Cut Off Middle and Social Studies, Drew Como. From Six Ward Middle School in Social Studies, Ami Loop. From Six Ward Middle School in Algebra One, Six Ward Brayden Orsono. Also in Algebra One from Six Ward Middle School, Landon Orsono. And from Six Ward Middle School in Algebra One, Owen Dela. Alright, moving on to ninth grade LEAP high school students. From South LaFouche High School in English One, Kobe Boudreaux. From Tibbetto High School in English One, Jacques Basom. From Tibbetto High School in English One, Lily Ballelo. From Tibbetto High in English One, Corner Callahan. From Tibbetto High School in English One, Emma Chanel. Okay, and from Tibbetto High School English One, Josie Vicner. Alright, we have a large group of students in Algebra Two that made a perfect score.
It's, I'm sorry, it's English.
English?
It should be English Two.
Oh.
We don't give LEAP in Algebra Two, so.
I don't just read those. I should know that. Yeah, yeah, that doesn't even make any sense. Alright, so English Two, from South LaFouche High School, J.C. Jarro. From South LaFouche High School, Lauren Louvier. From South LaFouche High School, Julianne Nigle. From South LaFouche High School, McKenna Rodred. From South LaFouche High School, Ada Lee Vaughn. From South LaFouche High School, Isabella Verden. From Tibbetto High School, Kendall Amadi. From Tibbetto High School, Colin Bourgeois. From Tibbetto High School, Samaya Elashri. From Tibbetto High School, Haley Jackson. From Tibbetto High School, Sophie Noblock. And from Tibbetto High School, Emma Lambden.
Folks, it goes without saying that the accomplishments of these children are truly remarkable. In any year that this level of achievement is attained is remarkable. But this year, every student receiving this tonight almost guaranteed was impacted in some way. Some tremendous, many not sleeping in their houses for days, weeks, and even months. And to see them rise to the challenge and not pass, but score a perfect score on what the state has given truly is remarkable. Thank you so much for what you do to support these kids. Thank you for sharing your children with us. And thank you for supporting the school system as we navigated, no doubt, the most difficult year of public education. So one last round of applause to these kids. And we've got a really entertaining agenda if you all want to stick around. Otherwise, the city of Tibbetto has some fantastic restaurants that are waiting for you. Y'all have a great night.
With Miss Cousin Galski.
Okay, we're going to get started again. Students well deserved. And let us start with number three on the agenda, the approval of board consent agenda. And if you don't mind, Board, I will read it all, A through E, and then I will accept a motion after that. Unless any of you would like me to stop, that's a good thing. Letter A, approval of board consent agenda items. B, minutes of regular board meeting held September 7th, 2022. C, minutes of board meeting in service held October 3rd, 2022. D, superintendent's quarterly report for periods aligned through September 2022. E, observance proclaimed by LaFouche Parish School Board Family Engagement Month in the state of Louisiana. National Principals Month, October 1st through 31st, 2022. National Custodial Work Recognition Day, October 2nd, 2022. LaFouche Parish Bus Safety, School Bus Operation, and School Bus Monitor Appreciation Week, October 17th through 21st, 2022. With that said, can I have a second? Mr. Patita, do we have a second? Mr. Barry, any discussion on board and discussion on public? With that said, let us please start. Okay, the answer is now is vote. Thank you, Board. As for the number four, approval of policy and community recommendations as per meeting held September 21st, 2022. The others?
We have A to approve provisions to policy GBD for employment and employment personnel. GBRID, simply, GBRID, military, GBN, dismissal of employees. IDEFA, special education at large in council. J BCE, public school choice. JGCE, child abuse. LEH, patriotic organizations, which is a new policy. So move.
We have the second, Mr. Bootery. Any discussion on board? We have a lot of different policies. Anybody concerned by any of those, any discussion for the public? If not, let's please. And let's see now, superintendent's group. Approval insurance committee recommendations as per meeting held September 21st, 2022. Ms. Mary Patita.
Hey, to accept Americas as the dental and vision insurance carrier for 2023 as presented by Buddy Ladee of Gallagher Benefits Services, Inc. So move.
Do we have a second, Ms. Batten? Is there any comments from the board concerning this? Okay, dental and vision, the representatives will be addressing retirees and everyone else. I like to call retirees. But they will be addressing concerns of any, anything to, oh, okay, that is fine. Letter B, open, sorry, this is for the insurance. And which we are, letter B, please.
To accept the life insurance benefits for 2023 with Guardian as presented by Buddy Ladee of Gallagher Benefits Services, Inc. So move.
Do we have a second, please? Dr. Guilla? Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Please, vote.
To approve the renewal of short-term and long-term disability for the 2022 with Signum New York Life as presented by Buddy Ladee of Gallagher Benefits Services, Inc. So move.
Do we have a second, Ms. Bootyblock? Any comments from the board? Mr. Patita?
I would just like to thank Mr. Ladee and the people that worked with him for getting these benefit, benefits for our unemployed. He made some changes, and they were definitely something that we need to see. Thank you very much, Mr. Ladee. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Patita. Any other comments from the board? So the day is back there, now's the chance. So, the day is back, there now is a chance, please. Hi, any comments from the public? Now, let's vote, please. And, thank you, please. With that said, let's go to number six. Approval of finance committee recommendations as per meeting held September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Item A, to approve President Ray Bernard and Superintendent Jared Martin to sign the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire by adopting the Louisiana Compliance Questionnaire Resolution and to submit a copy of the questionnaire to the board CPAs and business advisors, the board's independent auditors, so moved.
Do we have a second, Ms. Boutrier? Any comments from the board? This deals with the audit engagement compliance. It's just a, let us solve. Any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public?
Mr. Boutrier, can you speak up? You can't hear you, but you.
I, I'm sorry, I, I would definitely do that. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Any comments from the public? If not, let's vote, please. And it's unanimous.
Item B, to approve the recommended changes to the land and facilities manager's job description. So moved.
Do we have a second, Ms. Boutrier? Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Now, let's vote, please. There's some guy who didn't vote. Guess who that was? Me. We got it, just now. And it's unanimous.
All right, item C, to approve employee stipend pay utilizing ESAR funding for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three fiscal year as presented by Ms. Lafon, artist's business manager. So moved.
Do we have a second, please? Mr. Blaisons, any comments from the board? Ms. Batten.
I just want to say thank you to Mr. Case Martin. Any time he did, you know, stipend to our employees, gave him money in the hands. It's always a positive, that's always a good thing. Thank you all very much.
Mr. Boudoir.
I was just trying to ask Mr. Martin, maybe for the benefit of the public, to explain briefly what we're doing with that.
So, what would it be, two years ago? The COVID pandemic brought about federal stimulus dollars to local government agencies. The school board has been the receipt of some of that money. And a large portion of that money was dedicated to learning laws, to summer school, to fighting COVID through all of the protocols we had to put in place. But we could also use some of it to address recruiting and retention of employees. And so, this money is being put to that use. And so, our employees this November, and again this May, will receive a stipend, both certificated and non-certificated, to both help us on the recruiting and retention front. Yes, ma'am. The support folks get five hundred and a thousand in the fall. And the five hundred for support, a thousand for certified. And it's exactly twice that for both the certified and non-certified.
Any other questions for Superintendent Martin?
I just want to thank Superintendent because we have some part-time workers who deserve the same. And we include with them, they weren't included, there wasn't included at first. But now they're included, and I just sent him a muscle or teeth. And I thank him for listening to his employees, because I brought an employee to his office. And he sat back and listened to her, you know, and, and he just, it was really good. It was good for me, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mrs. Thomas, thank you. Any other comments from the board? Comments from the public? Let's go to the next. All right, we have a little problems, it is unanimous, all right. Letter B, please.
All right, item B, to approve a request from Jimmy Ankle, federal program director, for supplement pay for the parent and family engagement school-level contact personnel for the engaged activities.
Do we have a second, please? Mr. Patea, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public concerning this particular item? If not, let's vote, please. Any others? Ms. Boudoir.
To approve advertisement proposals for E-Rate Wide Area Network and Internet Access Services. So moved.
Do we have a second, please? Dr. Gia, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Not let's vote. And it's unanimous. Ms. Boudoir.
Item F, to approve the request to advertise for formal proposals for access control and surveillance services. So moved.
Do we have a second, please? Ms. Adams, any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Let's vote, please. And it's unanimous.
Item G, to approve amendment number one to the professional services agreement between the LaFouche Parish School District and Litter Consulting Engineers. So moved.
Do we have a second? Mr. Blaisons, any comments from the board? Comments from the public? Vote, please. And it's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Boudoir. Number seven, approval of land and facility management committee recommendations as per meeting held September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Blaisons.
A, to accept the change order request for twenty-one additional days to the contract due to implement weather for the month of August, two thousand twenty-two at the new Thibodeau Middle School. So moved.
Do we have a second, please? Ms. Boudoir, do we have any comments from the board? Comments from the public? Let's vote, please. And it's unanimous. Letter B, Ms. Blaisons.
B, to approve the request from St. Mary's Nativity School waiving the rental fees for the use of the Racism Middle School gym for volleyball and basketball practices. So moved.
Second, please. Ms. Patea, comments from the board? Comments from the public? Vote, please. And it's unanimous. Ms. Blaisons.
C, to accept the change order for LCO Middle School to remove and replace all existing metal-covered wood fascia on the kitchen cafeteria building, building three, and replace with new flush metal panels and plywood subframe. And to add ten additional days to the contract for these changes. So moved.
Second, please, Ms. Bourgeois. Any comments from the board? Public? Let's vote, please. And it's, Ms. Blaisons.
D, to accept the change order for twenty-two additional days due to a delay in delivery of the Dean's Day material at South LaFouche High School. So moved.
Second, please. Dr. Gia, any comments from the board? Comments from the public concerning this item? Not let's vote, please. It's unanimous. It's unanimous. All right, Ms. Blaisons.
E, to accept the low bid from Cal, L O C, in the amount of one million, three hundred eighty thousand for hurricane height repairs to North Rose Elementary. So moved.
Ms. Adams, second. Any comments, board? Public? Thank you, let's vote, please. We missed that for an agreement. Okay, good, it's unanimous, we're ready to go. Letter F.
F, to accept a little bid from town builders in base bid in the amount of seven hundred eighty-six thousand. Alternate number one in the amount of three thousand, one hundred seventy-eight. And alternate number two in the amount of thirty-three thousand, seven hundred five dollars. For a total bid amount of eight hundred twenty-three thousand, seventy-three dollars for the permanent repair of Golden Meadow Upper School. So moved.
Second, please. Ms. Lafon, any comments from the board? Ms. Blaisons.
Thanks, President. I'd just like to say one thing, it's finally good to see some real permanent fixes, some bids coming back, I mean, things are happening. And I think some positive things are coming, and they're going to continue every meeting from here on out for the next year, probably plus. So, but it is good to see some permanent repairs being put on the table.
Thank you, please. Any other comments? And the public, please. Not let's vote. And it's unanimous, thank you, Ms. Blaisons. All right, with that said, let's look at number eight, new business. And we'll start to receive a report on the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three student enrollment figures for all LaFouche Parish public schools. Mr. Phillips.
President Bernard, Superintendent Martin, and members of the board, the minimum foundation program formula that was adopted by ESSY and approved by the legislature determines the cost of a minimum foundation program of education in all public elementary and secondary schools and helps to allocate the funds equable to all school districts. The MFP is the largest source of revenue for the LaFouche Parish School Board and its general fund. After all required mandates are met, the LaFouche Parish School Board has the flexibility to spend the funding to meet the needs of its schools and students. Because the MFP is directly tied to student enrollment, the LaFouche Parish School Board faces a challenge when there's a decline in the district's student population. The Louisiana Department of Education obtains student enrollment counts twice during each fiscal year. The initial count of the student enrollment is submitted October first, and the second count is submitted on February first. Any fluctuation in the enrollment count from October first to February first requires a mid-year adjustment reflecting either an increase or decrease of MFP funding as determined by the changes in enrollment. The second count on February first is the count used to implement the MFP for the following fiscal year. It might be a bad out money count. The current base per pupil amount in the MFP formula is four thousand and fifteen dollars. The unofficial October first, two thousand twenty-two MFP student enrollment count is thirteen thousand, one hundred twenty-three. This is a decrease of five hundred sixty-six students compared to the October first, two thousand twenty-one official MFP student enrollment count, which was thirteen thousand, six hundred eighty-nine. Keep in mind that pre-K and other preschool children are not funded through the MFP formula. Our total student enrollment for October first, two thousand twenty-two is thirteen thousand, seven hundred twelve, which is a decrease of six hundred seventeen students from last year. October first total enrollment count, fourteen thousand, three hundred twenty-nine. The February first MFP count of two thousand twenty-two was thirteen thousand, two hundred thirty-four, which is a decrease of four hundred and fifty-five students as of October first of two thousand twenty-two. The total enrollment count of February first, two thousand twenty-two was thirteen thousand, seven hundred sixty-three, or a decrease of fifty-one students as of October first, two thousand twenty-two. So, the counts compared to February, we didn't lose as many students as our counts compared to last year at this, at this time. Please also note that our October first, two thousand twenty-two student enrollment counts are not official until around November eighteenth, when the student information system data is due to be cleared up for errors. That concludes my report of the two thousand twenty-two student enrollment count.
Thank you, do we have a motion to accept, accept that particular count? Is that just a report? Okay, I, you can ask questions, of course. All right, Mr. Phillips, can, can we receive a breakdown of the population increase and decrease per school? We don't, we don't even know, but I'm wondering if you could send it to us in case our constituents would like to know. I have that prepared. Yeah, I'll get, I'll bear that to you. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you. Any, any other questions from, to Mr. Phillips? Okay, all right, if not, let's, let's move on. To consider making an announcement of the intent of the board to call an election, Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir. If the board approves, we will call for an election in the spring. And once approved, I will read the announcement which is required by law.
That said, are you going to need a motion to that effect?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Ms. Dr. Gia? Do we have a second, Mr. Boudoir? Any comments from any members of the board, any public, before we turn it over to Superintendent Martin? Could you come up, sir, please?
Hey, Brett Smith.
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go ahead, I, I didn't realize you were going to start saying your name. I was going to tell you, at that point, they saw your name, your address. You have five minutes in which to direct any comments you might want to make to the board.
Five minutes.
Uh, we, we haven't started yet.
All right, sir. Brett Smith, six oh one Evergreen Street, Tegel, Louisiana. Four members, four years ago, some of y'all were running for school board. And roughly at this time, the school board, some of y'all were on. And roughly at this time, the school board, some of y'all were on, decided to, uh, vote or interview for a new, uh, superintendent. Some of y'all were very upset that the board did this before you could get in and make your decisions as board members. I'm running for board, school board, and I feel that you guys, this is for the next term. Because you're making this decision to have a vote in the spring, which, that's fine, but why can't we push the vote in November and let the next board make the decision to put that vote into November? All right? It just feels like you're not, here we are, we've got three months left before you all will come in. And this, Martin, I get it, you're trying to give you a plan and grasp, I get it. But I just feel that it should be the next board making this decision. A, because you're making decisions about where you're gonna put money, and especially for pay, and I wanna make sure there's enough funds. If I'm elected, there's enough funds there. So in two years, we're not having a rift. Because we have money in essa that we're paying salaries with, that we gotta now have because of that. So just remember back, some of you board members, how upset you were when that board made the decision to make something, uh, for the next board. Uh, just wanted to present that, um, 'cause I just don't feel it's right. And I get it, I want every teacher to have a pay increase, I'm, I'm for it. But I at least, as a person who's running for the mem, board member, at least know what's going on with this plan. I've only heard it through the break. All right? And I don't think it's fair that you all throw out the, and again, you're putting in the spring. The public always feels like that in the spring, you're hiding something because nobody goes out and puts in the spring. And that's what happened last time when we lost by nineteen votes. Just my opinion, I just wanted to get out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Are there any other comments from the board? Yes, ma'am. Could you please come up?
I don't think you can come up.
Uh, yes, yes you do, ma'am. Yes, you do. And please, like everyone else, state your name and physical address, and then you can give your comments.
Debbie Halman, three twenty-two Cedar Street Drive, Tibbet. I just wanted to ask what election are y'all referring to? Some clarification?
We're, we're not gonna answer questions. Do you have any comments to make?
Can somebody just clarify what that says?
Superintendent, Superintendent, what are we doing that short?
That was my question.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Uh, any other comments from, uh, the board?
I just have a question. I know you're probably gonna tell me no, but.
Well, come on up here.
If we're just speaking.
Come up here like everybody else, please.
Okay, so we're all finishing in the morning.
No, you just come up here, state your name, please, and your address.
Jane Arnold, sixteen C. Laflin Lockport, from Louisiana, seven zero three seven four. I agree with Brett Smith. But what I wanna know is, is this gonna be the last and only time we're gonna be able to speak? Because if he's gonna lay out his plan, and this was the only time for public comment, and PDF was not uploaded onto board docs today for us to look at, because you guys only put things up twenty-four hours before the meeting, how fair is that to us as constituents that have children in the school system to have, make an effective comment? So I'm just asking, do we get comment after these weeks? Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? With that said, Mrs. Superintendent? Okay, let's vote please.
Okay. The announcement is as follows. Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Wednesday, November second, two thousand twenty-two at six P.M. At its regular meeting place, the Parish School Board Office, Boardroom eight oh five East Seventh Street, Tibbet, Louisiana, the Parish School Board of the Parish of Louisiana, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting one or more resolutions bordering upon calling elections affecting ad valorem and/or sales taxes to be held in LaFouche Parish.
Any comments from the board? All right, if not, let's move on to the next article. And that would be memorial resolutions, and we'll start with Mrs. Elizabeth Fauquen, Ms. Valerie Boujoua.
Mrs. Elizabeth Fauquen, she is officially known as Miss Beth. Was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on August first, nineteen sixty-four, as a teacher at Racine Junior High School. Beginning with the nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven school year, Miss Fauquen was promoted as the guidance counselor at Racine Junior High School. Miss Fauquen retired on May thirty-first, two thousand, having served LaFouche Parish District for a total of thirty-two point five years. I have to say that, uh, Miss Beth Fauquen was, was one of my teachers when I was at Racine Junior High School. Actually, an English teacher, and later on became a friend. She will be dearly missed.
Thank you, Mrs. Beth.
So many, many years ago, when I first started teaching, Miss Fauquen was finishing up her career at Racine Junior. And she kinda took all of the newbies under her wings, and, and she just kinda took care of all of us, and kinda taught us how to be educators, and, and she just made an impression on people. She was just a good, honest person. She was caring, and she took care of people. She is really really.
Any other comments, Mrs. Beth? All right, Mrs. Cleo Verret, Ms. Patita.
Mrs. Cleo Verret was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on August twenty-ninth, nineteen sixty-six, as a teacher at West Tibbet Junior High School. Miss Verret retired on May third of nineteen ninety-two, having served our district for thirty-five, thirty, excuse me, thirty point five years.
Thank you. Uh, Rebecca Pierce, media specialist. Mrs. Rebecca Pierce was hired by LaFouche Parish School District on September twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-four, as a parent professional. She led the district in May of nineteen seventy-six, but returned as a teacher at Golden Meadow Lower Elementary for the nineteen eighty-one, eighty-two school year. She was promoted to media specialist in August of two thousand and four, where she remained until her retirement on May thirty-first, two thousand and thirteen. Mrs. Pierce served at LaFouche Parish School District for a total of thirty-one and a half years.
Mr. President, I move that these resolutions be adopted by general consent. I that a copy of these resolutions be recorded on a special page of our menu.
Thank you. With no objection, let the record reflect that these resolutions were adopted by general consent and will be recorded on a special page of our menu. Thank you. And we'll move to the last item. Ten, Superintendent's update. Uh, Superintendent Martin, do I have a motion? Do we need a motion to have, or either that's the case, or we'll let you do your update?
Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, my update tonight is the same four major topics that we've been talking about for a while, and I'll be in the facilities. Um, like Mr. Blazos mentioned, we're making a lot of progress, but we also keep stepping our toe on materials. Um, while we're starting to get bids, a lot of contractors are now moving into the area, which is phenomenal, and we're seeing a lot of work being done. Um, this roof that we saw tonight at South LaFouche, it's called Denz Deck. It's the very specific type of roof that you put in a flat roof. We're not gonna get it until, at least after the start of the new year. So while we've been very fortunate, we've had good weather, and we've been able to isolate the leaks in the building right now, it is a major concern for not only South LaFouche High School, but all of our facilities that have temporary roofs. We put these roofs on after the storm. Um, many of the roofs have what's called like a shrink wrap, bubble wrap, with a phenomenal one-year warranty on them. That one-year warranty is closing in. And so we, we, we're having to do a lot of repairs to these temporary roofs, and we're really anxious to get the permanent roof repaired. Um, but if you hear things happening in schools, like water trickling in, um, it is happening, and, and our maintenance crew and our contractors have done a phenomenal job, uh, running that down and taking care of it. Also, on the facilities front, we've got two schools that I continue to talk about because they continue to be quite vexing in terms of their ability to pin down what their future looks like, and that's Bayou Buff Elementary and Golden Meadow Middle School. And I'm gonna start by saying the good news. The good news is that Bayou Buff Elementary kids are being serviced in a very fine school today. The old Chack Bay Elementary School still being available was a godsend. And the fact that we're able to get it up and running and get it painted clean and in top shape is, is a blessing. So the kids have a place to be. And frankly, that's good because they might be there for a while. The decision about Bayou Buff is gonna hinge on how damaged it is, and it does not appear that it's at least fifty percent damaged. But when you rebuild it back, you have to build it back to code. Code means you have to put mitigation into effect. Mitigation for a building that flooded could mean a number of things. Believe it or not, it could mean waterproofing the structure to make it so that it cannot flood, as though the building itself would be impervious to water. The architect has to present that to FEMA as an option. You could build a levee around it. The architect has to present that to FEMA. You can level the building and then build a new one. We have to present that to FEMA, or you hire these folks that go in under the slabs and elevate the building, and we have to present that to FEMA. Guess which one FEMA's gonna mandate you do?
Chief Chief.
You got it. So these processes have to work themselves through, all of these decisions have to be made, and the architect, uh, Mr. Positary, it's, it's a good thing he doesn't have a lot of hair, because it would all be pulled out of him. Uh, a- and I'm joking about this. It, it's frustrating, but at the same time, that is the process we're married to, and what we are determined to do is give the community of Bayou Buff, at the end of this, a school that can withstand the future, whatever it looks like, and we're gonna keep a school in that community. That's the path that we're committed to, and we wanna make sure we don't miss an opportunity to build a better school than what exists there now. If we were to take the LaFouche Parish taxpayer dollars and just go fix the school and forego any money that FEMA would give us, we could get it done very quickly, but we would have a school that was still prone to flooding, and we would not have any access to the potential millions of dollars that FEMA was gonna give us to make the mitigations that that school needs. Golden Meadow Middle School, everything I just said, again, it's the exact same scenario. Uh, and this doesn't apply to the entire campus, right? This only applies to the campuses that were most, um, impacted by the storm. Golden Meadow Middle School, it's the two-story structure, not the historic front. And at Bayou Buff Elementary School, it's the two buildings closest to the parking lot, not the new structure in the back. And ironically enough, then you had a building one hundred and eighteen years ago, and not the little red schoolhouse. It's, it's like a storm never came. Right? You can, you can go and see it. So as it relates to facilities, that's your update. Uh, all of our kids have a place to be. I wish I could tell you when the students of Golden Meadow Middle School were gonna be able to return back to their campus, but right now, there's more questions than answers. Um, I would have told you confidently six months ago that in two years, they'll be back, and it just keeps getting cloudier and cloudy. Uh, but again, I'm, I'm very happy with the place that we have our students now. The teachers of Golden Meadow Middle School, if you go and visit them, like the school that they're in, um, and they're able to service their kids, and the extra curricular activities that the kids of Golden Meadow Middle School need, we still have an operational gym at Golden Meadow Middle School, uh, that they can use. So again, I don't think that they're being shortchanged from the service side, but the way we're positioned now is not the long-term solution. Uh, staffing continues to be a concern. We do have less than ten teacher vacancies, um, but it is a complete and total lack of certified teachers, uh, available to fill those vacancies that has us concerned. This is unusual for us to be in this position right now, and certainly not unique to LaFouche Parish. Every superintendent I speak to, uh, is speaking about these, these staffing challenges. Um, teaching and learning, the same push continues to get in classrooms and give teacher support and feedback. We've done, uh, approaching three thousand walk-through observations throughout our districts. Uh, two thousand teachers, our principals are not in their offices. They're routing classrooms, and we're making a concerted effort to make sure that our kids are being exposed to the highest quality curriculums, so we can have more nights celebrating kids at school, uh, perfectly equal to scores like tonight. Uh, looking ahead, uh, I'm gonna speak specifically to what was the first step tonight on a long-time bonding events that this board has to do to get to a potential election in March. Um, this is a school board election, make no mistake about it, uh, but this is not the school board train that's driving this, right? So this is the LaFouche Parish government driving this train specifically to the parish president, and what he is attempting to do is, uh, pretty profound for all of LaFouche Parish residents. He is gonna be streamlining road sales tax, drainage districts, and other ad valorem tax, so that we can lower the costs that taxpayers are contributing for these services throughout the parish. It is a complex issue that's gonna require a tremendous effort on his part, and the parish council's part, and my part, to go around the community and hold multiple town hall meetings and explain what all these moving pieces are gonna result in. But at the end of the day, for our businesses and for our homeowners, it's gonna mean lower taxes. And what the byproduct of these lower taxes that the parish government's gonna be able to do is he's gonna be able to lower sales tax rates by a percentage. We believe that percentage is gonna be four tenths of one percent. And by doing so, we can increase on the school side, sales tax collections by that exact same figure, four tenths of one percent, and generate approximately seven million dollars a year dedicated to teacher salaries and benefits. So it will not come at an additional cost to the vast majority of the people in LaFouche Parish. And the only people that will incur, uh, sales tax increase would be the city of Tibbet, and it would still be at a rate lesser than our competitors in the retail business and home. And it will also come in conjunction with lower property tax rates for all cities, including, of course, the city of Tibbet. So I think it's very good government, I think it's very good practice. The reason for the timeline is driven by the parish government, uh, because this is largely their referendum, but we are ultimately gonna be the benefactors of it if it passes. And by we, clearly, I mean our classroom teachers, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, and all of the people that make what we do possible. So that's the road ahead, that's where we are in this board. I certainly thank you for your support.
I appreciate it, thank you. With that said, uh, let us look at the tentative dates. Uh, Mr. LaFong.
I just wanna say publicly, I wanna commend our parish president, Marty Schasler, for, for having the vision and, uh, and to, and to have the meetings with the accessory, with, with our superintendent, to come up with a plan that's gonna benefit our teachers in the future. And secondly, I just wanna commend you and your staff, the maintenance people, for the work you're doing through all this parish. I don't make people realize what's happening in this parish until you visit the schools and see what's happening. And what you guys have done has been remarkable, and has been remarkable.
Am I able to? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, I'll echo it as well, but I know you've been meeting a lot with the parish president. I've met with him as well separately, for different reasons. But to see so many people working together for the same goal is the reason why you can vote twinkle and feel good about it. Because the end goal is to lower our taxes for our community, but in turn raise our teachers' pay? I'm sorry, but it's no brain. It's easy. But what they're doing behind the scenes is not easy. Very, very complex. They probably have guys like y'all all around them. Because what they're doing is shuffling numbers around and have to present this to people to vote on. Hopefully, it gets approval. Thank you.
The court gets them to create a decision. Uh, and, and this particular plan will be coordinated and explained throughout the parish, in fact, we're, we're looking at getting the superintendent, Mr. Schasler, Yalnabaya, and, and, uh, there'll be this. There'll be this, a- a- as this time approaches, and of course, the public will have tremendous input into what finally transpires. With that said, tentative dates of future meetings. Policy Decision Committee, Tuesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Transportation Committee, Tuesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Academic Committee, Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Insurance Committee, Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Finance Committee, Wednesday. Finance Committee, Wednesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Land and Facility Management Committee, Tuesday, October eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Advisory Committee, Tuesday, November first, two thousand and twenty-two. Regular board meeting, Wednesday, November second, two thousand and twenty-two. Are there any other announcements that we need to make by this board? Uh, let me, let me, uh, let me just, uh, say a few things. I wanna recognize our ad hoc, uh, committee for doing the work that they are presently doing. Dr. Giac, uh, Miss Val, Miss Tina, Miss Marion, uh, they've spent extra time. And, uh, Marion, I always put them mispronouncing. But, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that they're doing the extra work. And basically, the ad, the purpose of the ad, ad committee is simply to get our committees reassigned as we transition from fifteen to nine. And they will be making constant changes, and we do appreciate the extra effort that they're giving, uh, this board. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I want to make sure everyone understands that there is a fall break, October tenth and eleventh. No students will be there. The in-service that was originally scheduled for that Wednesday now will be canceled because we had that meeting on Monday. Are there any other comments, Mr. Phillips?
Recognize the scouting unit that's here now?
Yes, please. Thank you very much.
But, uh, please, can you introduce yourselves?
Please.
I am the coordinator from troop three three three. This is my troop. I'm a senior patrol leader. We came here to, if you ever communicate with Mary Badgers, to attend a council meeting. We thought this would be a great opportunity, seeing it was dating the school, as one of our scouts, through a group of reds. Let's recognize first act of the day.
Could you introduce each of these, uh, could you introduce each one of your members, please? Introduce each one of you.
Um, we have Ryzen.
They don't have to talk, you just wanna recognize.
Sorry, Terry, my brother. We have Rock.
There you go. And you're truly.
Uh, I, I do not be aware, a scout, a troop, the actual senior patrol leader leads the meetings and leads the boys as, as a show of leadership. So I was trying to sit back and have them run the show as much as we do. So, uh, Cor is actually our senior patrol leader. He's currently, uh, going for his Eagle Scout, and he's, he, uh, he has about four months to complete that project, or that, that whole merit badge and everything else that goes along with it. And it's been a culmination of many years, eight to ten years, of him trying to get to that point, from being a Cub Scout only to being a Boy Scout, and he turns eighteen in January, and the time is ticking, so. He's got a lot to do, and he's taken on all this. He's a senior at South LaFouche.
Thank you for that, uh, being able to recognize this. Any, any other comments? With that said, the students, we could.